So, good morning, everyone. This is the 25th meeting of the Prince George's County, the 25th virtual meeting of the Prince George's County Planning Board. We have a number of items this morning, but we have our administrative items today. So first, I'm going to take a moment because under item one, and let me say that we have the full board with us today. We have Vice Chair Bailey, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Dornar, and Commissioner Geraldo. It's good to see everyone. We're going to quickly go through these items because we also have a closed session item. So the very first thing that we have is resolutions of appreciation for two people. So the first person is Lennyfer Helen Hassan. Now, I never knew that was her first name. She's always been Helen Hassan to us. But she has served the citizens and residents of Prince George's County for 20 years as a dedicated staff member of the Prince George's County Department of Parks and Recreation, and has served in, you see Ms. Hassan in our actual physical pre-COVID Planning Board hearings and in our virtual hearings. She's worked not only with the Department of Parks and Recreation, but also in planning. And she's helped to resolve planning, zoning subdivision, and land acquisition and development issues related to parks and recreation. And she's led negotiations with stakeholders as well. She's done so many projects, including Marlboro Ridge, Beach Tree, Oak Tree, Oak Creek, National Harbor Brickyard, and Woodmore Town Center projects within the West Valley Town Center. Those are all very key, high-end projects in Prince George's County. So we give her credit for that, tremendous credit for that. So she's covered all of Prince George's County, and she's retiring from the commission, and she will be sorely, sorely missed. I have enjoyed working with her personally for many, many years, for her decades. And with that, I'd like to have a motion to approve her resolution of appreciation.
Move approval, Madam Chair. Chair, Chair Washington.
Go over a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Dornar?
But I.
Commissioner Geraldo? Commissioner Geraldo? Okay, well, he's there. Can you give us a thumbs up at least? Okay. While we work out that technical difficulty, let the record reflect that Commissioner Geraldo is present, did raise his thumb up in a vote, an "I" vote, so it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Helen Hassan. We so deeply appreciate all that you've brought to the table for the Department of Parks and Recreation and the commission. So our next resolution of appreciation is for Elaine Green, who has worked with Park and Planning for 26 years as a dedicated team member of the Department of Parks and Recreation. And she has used her considerable professional knowledge and administrative expertise, working progressively through, with increased responsibility as an administrative specialist too in the office of the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. She has made countless contributions. She has been a joy to work with. We've had to work with her directly from the chairman's office to the director's office, year in and year out, day in and day out, week in and week out, and she keeps it moving. So we're very, very appreciative to Elaine Green as well. We wish her well in her retirement. Also, is there a motion to approve her resolution?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo? Oh, yeah, okay. Commissioner Dornar?
But I.
Okay. So the "I's" have it 5-0, it's unanimous. Congratulations to our two retirees. All right, we're about to go into, oh, we need a motion to approve the draft minutes of the meeting of October 15, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Dornar?
But I.
Okay, let's see the hand signal. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Geraldo. We are about to go into closed session. At this time, we will have our IT folks and our Planning Board Administrator work with you, Commissioner Geraldo, so you can get on to the next thing. I will say that pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Articles 3-305B1, B3, and B7, we need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of a personnel matter and to consider acquisition of real property and matters directly related thereto, and to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Is there a motion?
Move, Madam Chair. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Dornar?
But I.
Commissioner Geraldo? Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Geraldo did vote "I." Okay, so we're going to close out on this and go to the new number for a closed session. Thank you. Okay, now I've got to find my closed session. Okay, we need a motion to come out of closed session.
So move, Madam Chair.
Madam Vice Chair makes the motion. Seconded by whom?
Commissioner Washington.
Okay, Commissioner Washington. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Washington. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I.
Commissioner Dornar?
But I.
Okay, wonderful, the "I's" have it 5-0. So we are back in open session. We're going to, I have several announcements before we proceed. Okay, so, good morning. I'm Elizabeth Hewlett, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session for Thursday, October 22, 2020. We have just finished our closed session items, and we will soon resume our development review items. In an abundance of caution resulting from the global spread of the COVID-19 virus, this is the Planning Board's 25th silver anniversary virtual meeting since March. During these continued challenging times, perhaps escalating challenging times, we remain committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and of course, our staff as we continue business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of our participation guidelines for our hearings. Speaker, pre-registration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. All participants must register, and all materials or exhibits must be submitted by 12:00 noon on the Tuesday before each Planning Board meeting, as shown on this screen, and announced in weekly meetings, and posted on our website, and clearly stated in bold red on our published weekly Planning Board agenda. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided from the Planning Board office. Online-registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. Registered speakers may also listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, using the call-in number provided in the email. We ask all participants to mute your phones when not speaking. Please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in the room at the same time. Of course, the public may continue to watch Planning Board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. Please see the screen for instructions. As always, we commence our meetings with a moment of silence for those who have passed on in the intervening week. First, we want to start with Teresa Marie Minert. She is the wife of Joe Minert, who is the Director of Planning and Community Development for the city of Bowie. We want to keep Joe Minert and his family in our thoughts. In Prince George's County, we remember age 21 Robert Edward Burrell III, who was a musician and singer in Upper Marlboro, who was killed in a car crash near Sootland Parkway on Saturday. We want to remember the growing victims of the widespread coronavirus, more than 8.3 million cases in the United States, and over 221,000 deaths. That's a lot. They're not just statistics. They're someone's family, someone's parent, child, sibling, loved one, cousin. We want to remember these human beings. Throughout the nation and the world, we want to remember the victims of the protests occurring in Lagos, Nigeria. Fred Dean, age 68, former NFL defensive end who won two Super Bowls with the San Francisco 49ers. Vaughn McClure, age 48, ESPN football reporter. James Redford, filmmaker and son of actor Robert Redford. Doreen Montalvo, Broadway musical and screen actors known for roles in "In the Heights" and "West Side Story." Johnny Bush, age 85, country music singer-songwriter known for writing "Whiskey River," which was later recorded and made popular by Willie Nelson. Dana Barata, TV and film writer and producer of Dawson's Creek Private Practice. Sid Hartman, age 100, Minnesota sports columnist and radio personality. Obviously, there are many more. We can't include everyone. But we do extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered the loss of a loved one too. Our hearts go out to you. May we have that moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we are still in the month of October. It is Italian-American Heritage Month, German-American Heritage Month, Polish-American Heritage Month. It is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We've got to, women, you know what you need to do. Get that mammogram. It is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We will not tolerate domestic violence on any level, and we work, we at the commission work very, very hard with county and others and the sheriff's department to shatter the silence of domestic violence. So if you know someone, please reach out and provide help or direct them to getting help. It is also Bullying Prevention Month. We cannot tolerate bullying on any level, and very often, we find that our young people, our teens and whatnot, are being bullied and pressured as well. We cannot tolerate any bullying, no matter who might be the source. It is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. It is AIDS Awareness Month. It is National Crime Prevention Month and Emotional Wellness Month. And please, let's all work on that last one. October 22, 1907, Ringling Brothers Greatest Show on Earth was bought by Bottom and Bailey Circus. No, bought Bottom and Bailey Circus. 1932, notorious bank robber Pretty Boyd Floyd was shot and killed by FBI agents. 1962, during the Cuban Missile Crisis, President John F. Kennedy addressed the country on TV about the Russian medium and long-range missiles in Cuba facing the United States, capable of reaching the United States in five minutes. President Kennedy imposed a naval blockade on Cuba. There are many of us who will remember this, and the ducking underneath our desks in school and trying to protect us from these missiles. But, you know, that was always just a facade of a moral support because if any missiles had hit us, it would have been over. So President Kennedy did an amazing job with that blockade. Finally, we have a few more announcements. The Department of Parks and Recreation Master Plan Development, you know, we invite you to please re-envision the future of two regional parks, Cosco Regional Park and Walker Mill Regional Park. Your input will be used to foster plans guiding the development and conservation of park resources through the next 20 to 25 years. Please see the slide for links to the project websites. Also, DPR, the Department of Parks and Recreation will host three virtual community meetings to explore new regionally-serving multi-generation centers at the following sites. We are getting away from, you know, single-purpose community centers into multi-generation centers. So there's something from everyone, from the toddlers to the more seasoned seniors. So something for everyone, so it's one-stop shopping. The three dates are depicted on the screen, on Monday, the 26th, Tuesday, the 27th, and Monday, 11 November 2nd. So you can see the link on how to register. Please join the Department of Planning, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council for the virtual community meeting on the cultural arts study, which will be this Saturday, October 24, at 10:00 a.m. You can learn about the very first comprehensive inventory and assessment of the county's diverse and culture ecology and ways to participate in the planning process. Please register by noon tomorrow, October 23, and you can see the slide for online registration. STEAMFEST. STEAMFEST is absolutely wonderful. You hear very often people talk about STEM, but here at Park and Planning, we insert the "A" for arts. So it's not STEM, it's STEAMFEST. We're calling on all young innovators, problem solvers, design-minded thinkers to join the virtual STEAMFEST kickoff for 2020. We normally have this in person. It is fabulous with folks from NASA, Pepco, Baltimore Gas and Electric, you know, so many others, Washington Gas. I mean, it's just fascinating for children and to learn about science and engineering and things of that nature. We have, people can record their own music. We have radio stations typically in person, but this time, it will be virtual on Saturday, October 31, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. Students aged 6 to 17 will participate in challenges and activities using science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics. Registration details are depicted on the screen. Okay. Did you know? And in case you missed it, the state of Maryland was recently ranked as the fifth happiest state in the nation by Wallet Hub. Fifth in the state, that's amazing. And the survey ranked emotional and physical well-being, the work environment, the community environment, and the main factors to a well-balanced life. So it's just wonderful, and I just thought I would post that for everyone to see. We live in the right place. And finally, fine, and it's not perfect, but that's good news. And who can't use good news right now? And speaking of good news, speaking of good news. Okay, the census efforts concluded as of October 15, 2020. The deadline was fluid, apparently. It kept changing back and forth and back and forth, and somewhere in between October 31 and September 30, and then it went to, back to October 31, then it went to October 5, and then it went to October 15. It was so very, very hard to keep track of this through no fault of our own. That's all federal stuff. But the fact of the matter is that these are the final response rates, and Prince George's County truly stepped up to the plate. What's very critical about this is that Prince George's County has what is called 37 hard-to-count areas, as designated by the U.S. Census Bureau. 37. Unlike Montgomery County, which has seven, Howard County, which has three, we have so many. Yet, despite those 37 hard-to-count areas, despite the interruption of COVID, despite so many other factors where we could no longer really be out in public except for our weekly Saturday events, we surpassed our 2010 response time, self-response time, and we hit 70% right at the deadline at 11:59 p.m. on October 15. So I thought we would share the good news, and that good news belongs to all of you who helped, who listened to me fuss every single week, every single day. Prince Georgians stepped up, so thank you, Prince Georgians.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would like to thank you because you were the leader for the county of the Census Count, and I know how hard you worked and the hours that you put in. And so while we thank everybody for doing the census, I want to give special thanks to you for your leadership.
Ah, thank you so very much. It was my honor to chair the effort for the county. It was my honor, but I'm telling you, it was all hands on deck. So we're so, so greatly appreciative for Prince Georgians, and thank you, Commissioner Geraldo, for that shout-out. And then finally, we thank each and every one of you as we appreciate your flexibility, your cooperation, and your support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. We ask that you make every effort to stay safe. You know, we know you get lax after a while. You're tired of some of these safety precautions that you have to take. You cannot let up. You, please stay safe, but please also look out for one another. Reach out to someone you haven't spoken to in a while. Stay strong, stay resilient, stay woke, and remain ever hopeful as we strive to get through all of these challenging times together. Thank you. With that, I'm going to, the first item, I just want to say that we have our five commissioners on. We also have our Planning Director, Andre Chekley, present here today. We have our Planning Board Administrator, Jessica Jones, present. We have our technical hearing writer, Lee Kracke, present. We have our senior planning technician, Kenny Flanagan, here, working this PowerPoint here. We do want to make sure everybody remembers to vote. I meant to say that too. Please vote. We are proud to vote in that November 3 election. I will just say, it is so very important that we exercise our right and our privilege to vote. Okay, we also have Ryan Cron, our visual media specialist, working at keeping us all straight. Thank you so much, Ryan. And we have our Chief of Development Review, James Hunt, right there, and we can actually see him today. So that's really good. And without further ado, I'm going to call on item 7, followed by item 8. So item 7 is mandatory referral, 1937F, the William Schmidt Outdoor Education Center. Ms. Thompson, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, I am. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Shawn Matlock, are you on?
Elizabeth Chason is attending in for Shawn Matlock.
Okay, because I was calling you too, Ms. Chason. So we have Elizabeth Chason. Okay, good to almost see you, but good to know that you're on. And with that, Ms. Thompson, you can go forward.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, I'm Ivy Thompson with this special projects section and countywide planning. I am presenting the mandatory referral, William Schmidt Outdoor Education Center, MR 1937F. This proposal was reviewed per Land Use Article, Section 20-300 through 305 of the Maryland Annotated Code for Mandatory Referrals. The William Schmidt Outdoor Education Center, also known as Camp Schmidt, is an academic campus providing outdoor educational enrichment. Next slide. Slide, please. Can I do it?
Is this the next one? No, we're, yeah, we're working it here.
The project is located in, okay. The project is located in Council District 9. Next slide, please.
Ms. Thompson?
The, I'm here. The site is approximately 450 acres and is located at 18501 Aquasco Road in Brandywine. Next slide, please. The site is zone reserved open space and is bounded by agricultural and forested properties in the open space zone. Next slide, please. There is no overlay. Next slide, please. The site is located on the west side of Aquasco Road, which is a designated scenic and historic roadway, and it's about one mile north of its intersection with Prun Road and Brandywine. Next slide, please. The site consists mostly of woods with various trails, outdoor educational areas, cabins, and administrative buildings in four separate village clusters. And the site is subject to a Type 2 tree conservation plan. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the site where you can see what is already developed in the sighting of the current buildings. Next slide, please. So the existing site plan shows the orientation of the buildings, pedestrian vehicular circulation, and parking areas. The subject of this application is the new construction and redevelopment of the two village sites, the Orm Building, the Neville Building, and the Dining Hall. Next slide, please. There are two villages, Villages 1 and 2. Village, both villages are the construction of a new village with six, the cabins, one camp center, one open air pavilion, and two single-room classroom structures. There will be repaving at the entrance, driveway loop at Village 1, and stormwater management and water septic upgrades. In Village 2, it's the construction of a new driveway loop and a new village with eight cabins, one camp center, one open air pavilion, as well as fire department access to stormwater management and water septic upgrades. Next slide, please. The Orm Elementary School is the oldest building on the site, and this project is the redevelopment of the building for classrooms, a science lab, a multipurpose and conference room, administrative offices and restrooms, and a modest catering kitchen. The parking lot is being reconfigured, and private water and sewer will complete the proposed upgrade. Also, other site work includes paving of the existing gravel campus entry rows and ADA compliant, and an ADA compliant trail without, there are learning stations to serve students. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
You want the one after this? I think there's a delay on your end, Ms. Thompson.
The Neville Building is, oh, I'm sorry. No, this is the one I want. The Neville Building, it has the improvements, including entrance driveway loop, site improvements, and the redesign of interior restrooms to comply with the American Disability Act. Next slide, please, which would be the central dining hall.
We're there, just, apparently it's, okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is construction of a new dining hall, a new driveway entrance loop with limited adjacent parking, and a new roadway to provide vehicular and fire department access to the south side of the site. Next slide, please. So the four recommendations include the provision for full-cut optic lighting and increased off-site woodland conservation banking for this site and other Board of Education projects located in the Patuxent River Basin. This application has been reviewed for performance to the Planning Board's adopted uniform standards for mandatory referral review as set forth in the technical staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Board adopt the staff comments and transmit them to the applicant, and this includes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you. Glad to see the proposed recommendations.
Wonderful, okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, but I concur with Commissioner Bailey. I had the privilege of staying at that camp when my children were growing up, so. These much-needed improvements.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Chason?
Helen, thank you for including us in today's meeting, and we love to have your participation. Staff recommendations, always welcome to have another set of planning eyes on our plans. I think as Ivy noted, there were a lot of, there was a lot of community input on this through the design process, including like Chesapeake Bay Foundation, broader community partner participation. And we're in agreement with the staff recommendations. Number four, expanding the woodland conservation. Number four, expanding the woodland conservation. We'll work with your staff on that. We've already put a lot of the woodland on the site in conservation, but we'll see how much we can expand it.
So, that was it?
I think that's it.
Okay.
They're, you know, easy to include, a lot of these full cutoff. Of course, it's an environmental site, so we will do that anyway. We'll put all of this on the plans.
Thank you, Ms. Chason. Let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendations of staff and approve transmittal of MR-1937F to Mr. Joseph Wolf with Prince George's County Public School.
That can, that can.
Okay, so I think Commissioner Geraldo may have been at least louder than you, Madam Vice Chair. So his mic is definitely working. And we have a motion by Commissioner Washington and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five-zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
So the next item on our agenda is item eight, which will be followed by companion cases nine and 10. Item eight is also a mandatory referral, 2-22F, Public Safety Commission Tower at Aquasco Road. So let me just make sure we have the appropriate people on the line. First of all, Mr. McBride, Wayne McBride, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Perry, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Hunt, I'd like for you to make some preliminary comments, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Real quick, I wanted to take another opportunity, and it seems like I'm coming for you every week. Really happy about this. We have Elena Perry with us as a new senior planner within the Special Projects Section. She graduate?
Wait a minute, you got muted. Hold on. Okay, let's start again, Mr. Hunt.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, James Hunt with the Development Review Division. Just wanted to, again, take the opportunity to introduce Ms. Elena Perry, who's a new senior planner in the Special Projects Section. She graduated from the University of Maryland College Park this past May with a master of community planning. Before going back to school, Elena created landscape design for the DC River Smart Homes Program and modeled watershed impacts of land cover change scenarios at the National Park Service. Other work tasks and additional positions include environmental planning. She's done some accounting work and project assistance as well. Before she started with us, she worked last summer and the spring as well as an intern and a graduate assistant with the Community Planning Division looking at the implementation status and progress of the policies in Plan 2035, which is of course an important plan for Prince George's County. Her fun fact is that she is enthusiastic band geek that participated in marching band throughout high school and undergrad. So everyone, thank you, and wanted to formally introduce Ms. Elena Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt, and we look forward to hearing from Ms. Perry. And when we are able to actually meet again in person, we want to see the living proof about your marching band activities. Thank you. Ms. Perry, you are on.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, this is Elena Perry from the Special Projects Section in Countywide Planning Division. I am presenting the mandatory referral proposal, MR-2022F, Public Safety Communication Tower, Aquasco Road. This proposal was reviewed per Land Use Article Section 20-301 through 305 of the Maryland Annotated Code for Mandatory Referrals. The Public Safety Communication Tower project is for the new construction of 100 by 100-foot gravel compound, a 499-foot-high, three-legged self-supporting lattice tower, three equipment shelters, and four above-ground 1,000-gallon tanks. The Prince George's County Public Safety Communications Team has identified the need for the construction of a public safety communication tower to expand and improve radio coverage in the southern part of the county to complement the growth occurring there. Next slide, please. Project is in Council District 9. Next slide, please. The aerial view shows the existing vacant and woodland property in Brandywine. Next slide, please. The 42.87-acre site for the proposed communication tower is located on land owned by the county. Next slide, please. The site is within the Regulated Environmental Protection Area. A natural resources inventory has been approved, and a Type 2 tree conservation plan is under review. Next slide, please. The site is zoned as residential open space and is bounded to the north, south, and west by single-family homes and existing woodlands, and to the east by Aquasco Road, Maryland Route 381. The subject property is also adjacent to Horsehead Tavern, a county designated historic site. Next slide, please. The site is west of Aquasco Road, Maryland Route 381, just north of the intersection with Horsehead Road. Next slide, please. The site plan shows the 0.7-acre project site in the northeast corner of the property. A 16-foot-wide gravel driveway will intersect with Aquasco Road and Maryland Route 381 to provide access to the tower and accessory structures. An eight-foot handling fence will enclose the proposed project, and the compound will be screened to 100% capacity by retention of the existing woodland. The tower will not support lights or signs other than those required for aircraft warning or other safety reasons. The four above-ground 1,000-gallon tanks will hold propane to fuel the emergency generator that will support the radio equipment in the event of a power failure. Next slide, please. One recommendation alerts the applicant that a soils report may be required by the county during the building permit process review. This application has been reviewed for performance to the planning board's adopted uniform standards for mandatory referral review as set forth in the technical staff report. Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the staff comments and transmit them to the applicant. This concludes staff presentation.
Okay, so now you can take a deep breath, Ms. Perry. Congratulations on your very first presentation, and again, welcome to the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, specifically to the Planning Department. Let's see if the board, let's see if the board has any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, but welcome, Ms. Perry. Well done.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but I do welcome you, Ms. Perry.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions. Good job.
Uh, Commissioner Geraldo?
Good job, Ms. Perry. Thank you. No questions.
Okay, so we got everybody. So if there are no questions, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. McBride? I'm so sorry. There he is waiting patiently.
No, ma'am, I'm just a county owner, and I, I'm only here to answer questions. I don't have any comments.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. McBride. Okay, now is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and approve transmittal of MR-2022F to Mr. Wayne McBride.
Thank you.
That come, Madam Chair.
We have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five-zero. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Perry. And before I go on to the next case, I was remiss in not acknowledging that we do have our senior counsel on today, and that is Peter Goldsmith. So thank you very much. And I also failed to mention that we did have an addendum to our agenda, which will be the full commission meeting with Montgomery County that will start at 12 noon. So that will be on health insurance rate changes for the fiscal, for the next fiscal year. Okay, so without further ado, let's go to items nine and 10, which are companion cases. Departure of Parking and Loading Standards 482 and Departure from Sign Design Standards 709 for Bishop McNamara High School. Let's do a check to make sure we have the requisite people. Mr. Severs, Tom Severs?
Yes, ma'am, present.
Wonderful. Mr. Antonetti?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, wonderful. Tim Davis?
I'm your manager.
Wonderful. David Oakes?
Present, thank you.
Wonderful. John Barnhart?
Present, good morning.
Wonderful. That concludes my sign-up list. We do have some exhibits from, which I will let Mr. Severs or Mr. Antonetti address. Mr. Severs, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Thomas Severs, Senior Planner with Subdivision and Zoning Section. Items number nine and 10 on the agenda are Departure from Parking and Loading Spaces, DPLS 482, as well as a Departure from Sign Design Standards, DSDS 709, for Bishop McNamara High School. The applicant is requesting a departure from parking and loading spaces to reduce the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces by 70 spaces, and is also requesting a departure from sign design standards in order to allow a sign area that is three square feet larger than the maximum allowable sign area for a total of 51 square feet, and to allow a second rooftop sign along the site frontage. The departure requests are based on conditions provided in PGCPV Resolution Number 19-133 of Detailed Site Plan DSP-00013-06, which was approved by the Prince George's County Planning Board on December 5, 2019, for the construction of the Lorraine Science and Innovation Center, which is an addition to the existing private school. Slide 2, please. The site is located in the western part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 75A and Council District 6. Slide 3, please. More specifically, the site is located on the north side of Marlborough Pike, approximately 75 feet east of Xavier Lane. Slide 4, please. The site is located in the R-55 One Family Detached Residential Zone and the CSC Commercial Shopping Center Zone. The subject site is bounded to the north and west by properties in the R-55 Zone, to the east by detached single-family dwellings in the R-55 and CSC Zones, and to the south by Marlborough Pike Right-of-Way. Beyond Marlborough Pike are condominiums in the R-18C Multifamily Medium-Dinsky Residential Condominium Zone. Slide 5, please. The overlay map shows that the site is also located within a military installation overlay zone. Slide 6, please. The aerial photograph shows the existing Bishop McNamara High School and also shows the surrounding properties and roadways. Slide 7, please. The site map shows that the topography on-site is generally level. Slide 8, please. The Master Plan Right-of-Way map shows that the Master Plan Collector Roadway, Marlborough Pike, abuts the property to the south. Slide 9, please. The bird's eye view shows another angle of the subject property. Slide 10, please. The composite site plan shows the subject property with the adjacent parking lot located at Mount Calvary Catholic Church, highlighted in yellow, which contains the 70 parking spaces that is the subject of the DPLS request. Bishop McNamara High School, a private school with 234 students below 10th grade and 600 students 10th grade and above, requires a minimum of 239 off-street parking spaces per Section 27-568A. The school currently provides 169 parking spaces on-site and 70 parking spaces on the adjacent property of Mount Calvary Catholic Church. This departure request is necessary because a permanent access easement to secure the 70 spaces could not be obtained, which was a condition of DSP-00013-06. It should be noted that the 70 spaces are for upperclassmen on a permitted basis and may be revoked if necessary. Therefore, the operations of the school will not be affected in the event that the adjacent parking spaces are lost. Slide 11, please. This slide shows a site plan rendering of the Lorraine Science and Innovation Center and adjacent parking lot to the west. Slide 12, please. This slide shows the proposed circulation of the site, including the adjacent 70 spaces of Mount Calvary Catholic Church. Slide 13, please. This slide shows the proposed sign details. Per Section 27-617, the site is permitted to have one sign per street frontage and a maximum sign area of 48 square feet. Signs number one and four are the subject of the DSDS request. The proposed sign area of both signs totals 51 square feet, a departure of three square feet. Sign number four is also considered the second sign of the overall request. The monument sign displaying the name of the school will be demolished for the construction of the Science and Innovation Center. This sign will display the name of the school for sufficient visibility from Marlborough Pike. Slide 14, please. This slide shows the north and south elevation renderings with the subject DSDS signage mounted on the rooftop of the south elevation. Slide 15, please. This slide shows the east, west, and plaza entrance elevation renderings. The main proposed signage can be seen in the west elevation, displaying the name of the building and wrapping around the circular facade. Slide 16, please. This slide shows a full site rendering from another angle with the Lorraine Science and Innovation Center and courtyard, rooftop-mounted signage displaying the name of the school and the adjacent parking lot at Mount Calvary Catholic Church. In conclusion, the subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve Departure from Parking and Loading Spaces, DPLS 482, and Departure from Sign Design Standards, DSDS 709, for Bishop McNamara High School, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Severs. Let's see if there's any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn to Mr. Antonetti. So Mr., Ms., Mr.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the planning board, for the record, Robert Antonetti at the law firm of Shipland Horn. Very pleased to be here on behalf of the applicant, Bishop McNamara High School, Inc., regarding the two departures applications that were just presented. Today with us, we have Dr. John Barnhart, the new, I guess I can call him relatively new president and CEO of Bishop McNamara. Also, with regards to our design team, we have Mr. Tim Davis from Soltest, Mr. David Oakes, architect with Raymond Parker, and we have Mr. John Ferrante, who's actually viewing on the other screen, our land planer with Shipland Horn, but played a big part in this application coming together. I'd like to thank Mr. Severs for his review and work on this case. He was able to coordinate questions and details regarding these requests with staff in a masterful way. I'd like to commend the planning board and the planning staff, Ms. Chekley and her team, Mr. Hunt and the team, for really getting us to the 25th virtual meeting. It is incredibly impressive to see how efficiently and effectively the planning department has worked through these challenging times, and it is greatly appreciated, and 25 is an impressive milestone, so congratulations on that. Today, as you heard, simply, this application is a carried over from the detailed site plan approved by the board back in January of 2020 for the 20,655-square-foot Lorraine Science and Innovation Center. The board unanimously supported that application. As you can see from the elevations, it is an impressive building. It is part of the, it is part of the realization of the, of Bishop McNamara's 20-year Campus Master Plan. It's something that the community is supporting. Stakeholders have supported, parents, students, and other benefactors. Just recently, we received an incredible gift from the A. James and Alice D. Clark Foundation for $1 million towards this building. And so people are lining up to support it, and it is going to be transformative. It's going to be transformative for the school and the, and the school community, as well as the Forestville District Heights community. It is a carry forward, a carry forward of the Marlborough Pike Sector Plan, which calls really for this transition area to be a catalyst for a rebirth, a redevelopment of this corridor. The building placement, the massing, the materials, the style of it is really going to be a great gateway for that, for this corridor. So we're very much looking forward to bringing it to fruition. In the record of the case, and I believe maybe, Madam Chair, you were alluding to this, there is a letter dated September 21, 2020, from Dr. Barnhart, explaining the use of the adjacent explaining the use of the adjacent parking lot, the 70 spaces. Well, first, Madam Chair, is that already in the record?
That's already in the record. We have that. We got some additional items in time for our deadline, which, you know, some of which we are... Well, that's in the packet, too. So some of this stuff is already actually in the... Much of this is already a part of our staff report, so...
Oh, very good. Okay. Well, with that being said, the letter explains the use of the 70 spaces. The school does have a relationship since its founding with Mount Calvary Church. It used to be Mount Calvary Church and School. The school closed several years ago, so that large expanse of parking next to the store really wasn't being used. Although, we had a long history with Mount Calvary. Once the school, Mount Calvary School closed, we've really formalized the relationship with a lease, which we've been leasing for seven years, the 70 spaces. And it's been a very amicable and convenient relationship for both parties, and we look forward to carrying that forward in the future. The reason I brought up Dr. Barnhart's letter from the 21st is it does explain who utilizes those spaces. As Mr. Severs stated, parking on this is really for upperclassmen in this area. It is a privilege, not a right. If there was some issue where the parking became unavailable, we could look to source spaces from other locations. If you look to the north of the image that you have, or up from the image you have, you'll see a large parking lot behind the wing of the school. That's the Amalgamated Transit Union's parking lot, which really goes unused during the day. We've utilized, the school has utilized that space or those spaces for special events over the years. So that's a possibility if the 70 spaces with Mount Calvary went away, which we don't anticipate will happen. But again, we could also revoke the parking privileges for upperclassmen, and there would be no disruption to school activities. So just wanted to put that into the record and as part of the case today, just reemphasizing the findings of the staff. We do support their recommendations and findings. We're very much looking forward to moving forward with this project, and we appreciate your consideration. Our team is here to answer any questions that you may have, and we appreciate your support.
Okay, Mr. Antonetti. So first, I see that we have no conditions. So that's pretty amazing therein. So let's see if the board has any questions of you, and then I have one. Madam Vice Chair?
I don't have any questions, but Bishop McNamara is one of the treasures in the older communities in Prince George's County, and it's an absolutely beautiful rendering of what is to come with Bishop McNamara.
Thank you. So no questions, okay. Madam, Commissioner Washington?
No, no questions, but I absolutely concur with Madam Vice Chair Bailey's comment.
Okay. Commissioner Duonner?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Nope, no questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. So my question to Mr. Antonetti, so is it a requirement for your law firm to be a graduate of Bishop McNamara? Aren't you a graduate, Mr. Antonetti?
I am a graduate, and I'm doing it in three years.
Is your partner a graduate? Is your partner, Mr. Horn, a graduate? Is Mr. Jackson a graduate?
Mr. Jackson's a graduate, and Mr. Howler's a graduate as well.
No, he's on next, okay. He's got a fan for himself, okay.
We're very blessed to be associated with the school and to form the relationships with one another and the greater community. So it's a blessing to be part of the school community and history.
Okay, and wonderful. And the other thing I just wanted to say, and I guess I'll save this for... I guess Mr. Davis is on as only if we have questions?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Oaks, the same?
That is the same, yes.
I am going to turn to Dr. Barnhart, because he's the still fairly new President and CEO. And I do want to say, because I know that we've worked closely with Bishop McNamara for years and years, and to have a school, to have this portion, the Lorraine Science and Innovation Center, is so appropriate. And I remember when we heard this case in December and the resolution was approved in January, we were all so very, very impressed. And it's appropriate to pay homage to Lorraine. The school is no longer there, and it's just appropriate to have this wonderful addition to Bishop McNamara. And I thought it was just a beautiful, beautiful thing to do. And then on top of it, I mean, on top of it, to see how it's coming to fruition and its purpose, that's just a fabulous addition to the high school. So that's wonderful. And I know you wish you were back there, Mr. Antonetti, of sorts. And then the other part I'm thinking is that, my, how times have changed. When you have these, all these parking spaces for the upper-class high school students, when I think back when none of us had cars, none of the high school students back then. But things change. It's a whole new world. And with that, I'm going to turn to the President, Barnhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We couldn't sit, do a little bit. We couldn't be more excited about this project, not only for our community here at Bishop McNamara, our current students, our current families, our alum, like many of those at Shipland Horn, but even the alum within the community. This is really a beacon for what is to come tomorrow. We've spent a tremendous amount of time exploring and looking at the trajectory of career and college study and what our students write here in Prince George's County. And it is science and innovation learning.
That's fabulous.
And so this project is the gateway for our students' futures, for those in the community. We're offering some wonderful programming out of this building for the community at large. And it really is going to be that key to the success. So there's no greater time than in the middle of this pandemic and this health crisis to be investing in a science center. And we are, we're ready to go. So really, thank you for your support, and it is such a blessing to hear about alum and community members that are as one on this project as this commission itself.
So thank you so much, Dr. Barnhart, and welcome. And with that, I would say, and in listening to your comments, close to your last comment, let's get this up and running, the Science and Innovation Center up and running so we can put an end to this pandemic. Thank you.
That's right. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I could also add, this picture is quite appropriate. As you see in the tribute wall in front of you, there were two religious orders that founded the respective schools, Bishop McNamara and Lorraine. The Bernadine Franciscan Sisters, Lorraine, and the Brothers of the Holy Cross, which my dear father, Robert Antonetti Senior, was a brother of the Holy Cross, actually came to McNamara in the 1960s, wrote the school flight song. He was, our roots run very deep with the school. So as a tribute to him, I'm very excited and feel fortunate to be able to be part of this project moving forward.
That's terrific.
That is beautiful. I know many of us remember. I'm sure Madam Vice Chair remembers your dad well, so as do I. And I'm sure he's smiling down at this point. So that's wonderful. Thank you for pointing that out and for including the sisters as well as the brothers. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Antonetti.
Yes. So let's get a motion here.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DPLS-482 and DSDS-709 for Bishop McNamara High School.
Second?
We have a motion by... Hold on, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by... Was that, who was the seconded?
Commissioner Geraldo.
Commissioner Geraldo, okay. Because it's echoing, okay. Madam Vice Chair?
Both I, gladly.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Both I.
Commissioner Duonner?
Both I.
The I's have it 5-0. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next item that we have on the agenda is the September 2020 cycle of amendments, the 2018 Water and Sewer Service Area Changes. Let's make sure we have everyone we need on this. Ms. Thompson, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. Ms. Branch, are you on? Shirley Branch? Yes, she is.
Yes, I am here.
Okay. I hope you're visible. It's been a long time, Ms. Branch. Okay, so I hope we get to see you. Mr. Howler, are you on?
I am on, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thompson, you're on.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, I'm Ivy Thompson with the Countywide Planning Division. This is a review of the requested amendments to the 2018 Water and Sewer Plan for September 2020. Staff is seeking permission to transmit comments to the Prince George's County Council. Council Resolution CR-982020 introducing the September 2020 cycle of amendments was introduced to the Prince George's County Council at their September 22, 2020 council meeting. Per the Environment Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and the adopted 2018 Water and Sewer Plan, the planning board is required to provide comments to the county council on CR-982020. Next slide, please. The public hearing for the September 2020 cycle of amendments will be held on October 22... I'm sorry, today is October 22. October 27, 2020, the planning board, the Prince George's County Council Committee at the Hall will discuss the county executive regulations during their November 5, 2020 meeting. Next slide, please. The planning department staff reviewed six projects. Next slide, please. First project is the Dorothy A. Shiera Monte RT property, which is located at 3412 Northeast Robert Crane Highway in Bowie. The request is for development of nine residential single-family dwelling units. And the recommendation by both the planning department and the county executive is to advance to Water and Sewer Category 4 community system adequate for development planning. Next slide, please.
So that was the Caramonte property? The Caramonte? Okay, that was Caramonte. Okay, so then you're going to Woodmore? Okay, thank you.
Yes. The Woodmore residence, known as the McCoy Property, is located at 12910 Woodmore Road. And the request is for the development of a 16,000-square-foot single-family residence. The recommendation is to approve this project to Water and Sewer Category 4 community system adequate for development planning. Next slide, please. The G3 and D property is located at 10706 West Felia Road in Upper Marlboro. This proposal is for the development 340 dwelling units, residential dwelling units, I apologize. And the recommendation is to retain this project, this property, in Water and Sewer Category 5 future community system. And the reason for that is because the proposed development is not within 1,500 feet of an existing public water and sewer line. Next slide, please. The Traditions at West...
Uh-oh. We lost you.
West Felia. This is located at 11900, the 1900 block of old Marlboro Pike, I'm sorry. Pike in Upper Marlboro. And the request for this is the development of 46 residential dwelling units. The recommendation by both the planning department and the county executive is to retain this project and Water and Sewer Category 5 future community system. And again, the reason behind this is that the proposed development is not within 1,500 feet of an existing sewer line. And, oh, and Mr. Howler is on the call to...
We know he's on, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. The next slide, please. This is the Miller Property. It's for the development of 89 single-family attached townhouse dwelling units, and it's located at 6209 Real House Drive in Fort Washington, Maryland. And the recommendation is to advance to Water and Sewer Category 4. Next slide, please. The Livingston Road Property, which is located at 10400 Livingston Road in Fort Washington, Maryland. And the request is for the development of a single-family dwelling. The recommendation for this application is deferment of this particular application due to permitting issues in the Chesapeake Bay critical area. Also included...
Okay.
In the staff report that was submitted by ZPOR... I'm sorry?
Your sound is going kind of in and out, okay. Ms. Thompson?
So... There are, the staff request planning board approval to transmit the September 2020 cycle amendments to the Prince George's County Council. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Let me say, okay, let me say this first. We have a, Mr. Howler is on the line. We do have a letter that was submitted into the record timely. I guess that would be the applicant's exhibit number one, was submitted October 20. His response to, or his request to change the Water and Sewer Category from 5 to 4 on the Traditions at West Felia. We also have an exhibit in the record from Ms. Shirley Branch, which addresses the, I guess, the, at least a part of what Mr. Howler has to say. So I'm going to start with Mr. Howler, who wants to address just one recommendation on the Traditions property, and then we'll turn to Ms. Branch. Mr. Howler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Thomas Howler, on behalf of the applicant in this case. And I apologize for inserting myself into this consideration. These are normally very easy matters. But I wanted to raise a concern with the planning board because of the recommendation to retain the property in Category 5. And I'm speaking today solely with regard to application, or case number 20/W-04, which is the Traditions at West Felia property. And if you review the staff report that has been prepared in this case, the sole basis for the recommendation that the property not be advanced into Water and Sewer Category 4 is inconsistency with the criteria, which states that the property should be within 1,500 feet of existing public water and sewer systems. And as I indicated in my letter, the referral from WSSC, which is also reproduced in your staff report, states that a 3,000-foot gravity sewer extension is required to serve the property. In reality, and we submitted with our letter exhibits showing three options for connecting this property to sewer. And what that shows is two things. Number one is water currently exists in the street. And second of all is this property is directly across from a developed residential subdivision and is immediately contiguous to the west to a developed church, both of which are served by public water and sewer. And the two of the exhibits that we submitted to you show that the property is within 840 feet of one sewer manhole and 1,010 feet from a second sewer manhole, both of which are capable of providing sewer service to the property. It is my understanding from my conversations with Ms. Branch that WSSC has indicated that the longer sewer connection would benefit more properties, which currently are developed as single-family residences developed as single-family residences and are connected to septic systems, because that longer connection would provide a greater public benefit. But the criteria is simply proximity to existing sewer lines. And, um, and I apologize in my letter for referencing it as a mistake. I should have said that it was incomplete information, uh, in that, in that there are other options for connecting this to sewer, and those options will be explored if this application is approved and we are allowed to move into the subdivision review process. But it really comes down to, at that point, an engineering determination as what, as to what the most appropriate point of connection is. And it may be determined that the one that provides access to other properties is the preferred option, but the criteria simply relates to proximity to existing sewer lines. So to us, this is a very simple case of the fact that the property does in fact lie adjacent to existing development, which is served by public sewer, which is within 1,500 feet. And for that reason, we're requesting that the Planning Board recommend that the council advance this property from, uh, Water and Sewer Category 5 to Water and Sewer Category 4. And I'm going to answer any questions that the...
Mr. Haller, let me, let me stop you for a second, because first I have, we're going to be done with this case in a matter of like maybe 15 minutes, no more than 15 minutes otherwise, because then we have to do full commission, so, um, so I just want to tell you this, I, I just want to ask you, have you tried to work this out with WSSC yourself? So, because I, you're, we have what you're alleging, but I don't have, we don't have something from WSSC, and we do have Ms. Branch on, and she's going to speak, but it seems to me that if you're correct, and, and if that's the accurate criteria, and then there are other options, and that you've changed your, um, your actual, um, argument to say that not that WSSC made a mistake, but their information was incomplete because of the other options that are available, then you've got work to do to work with them to get your information to the council, because, because we don't have it here.
Well, we have, our engineers have contacted WSSC. They've acknowledged that these other, um, sewer manholes exist within the proximity, but they have not changed their recommendation, and I can't make them follow up with their recommendation.
Because from their view, perspective, it's more viable, they, they want to provide more, um, uh, I think you were talking about...
I, I, I would, I mean, again, I would, I would defer to Ms. Branch on this.
Okay.
It's my, is my understanding that rather than WSSC specifically responding to basically a yes and no question of is there an existing sewer line within 1,500 feet, they did a little, a different analysis as to which one they prefer, which, which is all well and good, but obviously puts a property like this one in an awkward situation when in fact we are within that required distance.
So there...
Because that's a fair, that's a fairly, um, you know, a, a simple objective criteria.
And what you're saying is basically they, they, they base their decision on a preference, not the legal criteria?
That's my understanding, as I said, attached to my letter were the maps prepared by our engineer, which are not, you know, which show the existing sewer lines that exist, um, in that area. These, they've taken the WSSC maps, and they have, um, shown on those maps, uh, the distance to the manhole. So, I mean, the information that we have provided is WSSC's database. It's not something that we manufacture. So it's not, it shouldn't be controversial as to whether those lines exist and what the distance is to the property.
Okay, let's see, you know, before I ask for any questions, Mr. Haller, I'm going to ask for Ms. Branch to, um, to respond, and then we'll see if the Board has any questions of either of you. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Branch?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you for allowing me to speak regarding this particular project. When we sent out the applications for review...
Ms. Branch, will you identify, will you identify, because I'm not sure if everyone knows, um, what your title is. You're, you're the Water and Sewer Plan?
Well, I'm very sorry.
Water and Sewer Plan?
I'm very sorry.
Okay.
Uh, good morning. Um, I am Shirley Anthony Branch. I am, uh, I work for the Prince George's County Department of Permitting, Inspections, and Enforcement, otherwise known as G-Pod, and I am the Water and Sewer Plan Coordinator for the county.
Thank you.
And I have been in this position for roughly 20 years.
A long time, yes, okay.
So some of you are familiar with me, not me personally, but with my name as it's associated to the cycle of amendments. Again, as we look at the applications that come through this cycle, they are submitted for comments to all of the reviewing agencies, particularly WSSC and Park and Planning. Unlike Park and Planning, WSSC does not hold a planning board to, and draft an official letter. Their comments that come back to us are staff comments, and those are the official comments. On this particular project, once the official comments came in, these comments were discussed with the Director of G-Pod and subsequently discussed with the Executive Office. At that time after it was introduced, uh, the applicant's correspondent, Mr. Haller, was provided the draft pages of the staff report because he was concerned that the Executive Office did not recommend advancing. And when he discussed why, and I, I discussed that with him, it was because of the distance of the sewer line, being more than, or greater than 1,500 feet. WSSC, in my experience, in my years of working with them, their, uh, comments are always, first and foremost, to the lines that would serve the community, because, uh, again, we are expanding, or would be expanding, the community system, the public system. So there may be any number of alternatives, not just for this particular project, but for all projects. But they tend to write for the, and give guidance on the lines that would effectively serve the community. And I would agree, that is what was done in this particular, in the comments that were received. So yes, there are other lines, but we don't know if they are feasible. When I discussed also with the, the writer of the comments, she indicated that other alternatives that may have been closer lines would not be gravity-driven lines. They may involve, uh, extensive grading, pumps, and all of that alludes to a pressure system and not a, a, a gravity-driven system, which is the preferred, uh, system. So with that, the comments were dra, were drafted as is. We do not go back to WSSC and ask them to rewrite comments to be more supportive of the developer, but we have to go with the comments that they provided. And the, the comments they provided are what is drafted in the staff's report. And that's what staff has, um, has, uh, again, discussed with the Executive Office. So I was very concerned when the letter stated that staff had aired. Neither staff, WSSC or G-Pod staff aired, uh, that there aren't additional lines, but they have not been, to my understanding, they have not been, um, evaluated to say that those would be feasible and more, uh, you know, more of what the report should have stated. Now, yes, they could possibly do that, but at this point, it would have to be to the council and not to, uh, the county executive. Again, we discussed with the county executive what was received, our official comments received, uh, from, uh, WSSC, and that's my position here. We just support what, uh, the comments, uh, as they were received by this office and further discuss with the Executive Office.
Thank you, Ms. Branch.
Yes.
So I'm going to see if the Board has any questions. I will tell you this, I, you know, I, we have counsel on the phone, but I, I am not sure, and we have Ms. Thompson, I'm not sure we have enough information at this juncture, based on, I mean, Mr. Haller indicated there are other options, Ms. Branch indicated, but we don't know if those options are viable or not. We don't have that information from WSSC. I'm not sure we're in a position to change the recommendation, um, but I do think, you know, maybe there's a possibility. If you get some more information, Mr. Haller, maybe the council will do that for you, if you can, if there's a way to find out whether those other options are actually viable. So let's see if the Board has any questions for you. Madam, Madam Vice Chair? For either Ms. Branch or Mr. Haller?
No, no questions.
Okay, um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Duoner?
Yeah, I don't believe who would necessarily have the information. It might be staff or maybe Ms. Branch. What's the extra criteria? I, I understand the idea of the public good and just having more public benefit by staying on the gravity, um, there in line, but is that the extra criteria for which the, the decision is made, or what is the criteria? Did Mr. Haller raise that, that concern, and, and I don't know, because I, I looked through the backup and it wasn't specifically outlined in there.
And Ms. Branch, maybe someone can tell us. And I know we have counsel on the line, too.
I'm sorry, the question being directed to me?
Whoever can answer it. Again, Ms. Branch, if you happen to know, if our legal counsel knows.
Madam Chair, this is Peter Golds, your counsel.
Thank you.
Apologize, um, can't get my camera to work.
That's okay.
I'll, I'll read, I can read it to you. Um, this is in section 2.14D of the 2018 Water and Sewer Plan, and, uh, what it says, or at least the pertinent part here, um, is the source of the dispute, it says, "Proposed development in the growth policy areas shall meet existing contingency policies and demonstrate location within 1,500 feet of existing public water and sewer systems." It just says, "Location within 1,500 feet of existing public water and sewer system." And, um...
That's it, so Mr. Haller is correct?
He has read it correctly.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Um, in, in, to the, to the consideration, as, as you know, in order to file a preliminary plan and subdivision, a property is required to be in Water and Sewer Category 4.
Yes.
This is a threshold issue.
Yes.
And so what has happened in this particular case is that we have had development from the west that has come all the way up to this property and is directly across the street from the property, which is shown on the exhibit that I submitted. You have development that has come from the east, which has now stopped, and in, in between where that property is and where the subject property is are two things. A large tract of land that the owner of this property conveyed to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation for preservation, which will never be developed, and existing single-family homes, which are on, on sewer, on, on septic service. And so if this property can't advance into the subdivision review process and the, uh, and, and do an analysis of the appropriate connection, then it will never be allowed to develop. This is truly a threshold issue on, on the developability of a property that's had suburban development approached from both the east and the west, um, and, and the, the opportunity to connect sewer exists in both locations, and instead of, of checking the box and saying, "Okay, you are within the 1,500 feet," then, um, um, we're, we're, we're parsing language as to whether or not the sewer line that they would like us to connect to is within 1,500 feet, and that's simply not what the criteria says.
Okay, Mr. Haller, so Mr. Goldsmith has, has read the actual statutory language, and, um, I might be persuaded at, at this juncture, because what you're describing could be perceived as a, as tantamount to a taking.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, that would be an unconstitutional taking, so, um, if it meets the, it meets the stated criteria, it may not meet the preference, but it meets the stated criteria as, as, um, stated by our, our, our senior counsel. Okay, so let me, but, but ours is a recommendation, so, um, um, now, now I'm a little bit concerned. So I don't, Ms. Branch, if you have anything to add, you got about two, you know, a minute, and then we gotta see if the Board has any other questions. And I didn't even get to Commissioner Geraldo yet, okay?
I, I have nothing further to add.
Okay, and I didn't get to Commissioner Geraldo.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would really like to hear something from WSSC. Having been a commissioner on WSSC, you know, I have a little knowledge about the, the sewer lines and, and whether or not it's pumped, or it's dealt by gravity, and I think for something as serious as this, let's get something, maybe Mr. Haller can get something from, uh, WSSC that addresses the concern.
But, okay, here's my, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm betwixt and between right now. I, I agree with you, Commissioner Geraldo, um, because they're talking about a preference and, and, and we're not sure whether these, um, other connections would be viable or not, but apparently everyone is in agreement that it meets the legal criteria, and that's the only criteria that we have. Are, are, are we sure, Mr. Goldsmith?
I mean, I could ask if they put my exhibits up, they show it very clearly.
I know, that's what I was keeping...
There's literally sewer lines directly across the street from the property.
Yeah, okay, so, um, just remember, what we said, transmit to the council is a recommendation, but I think, I think there's, I think we have a little bit of a problem here, but I don't want, if he's correct, that if they can't connect, obviously they cannot go to an, a preliminary plan, so they're, um, so they can't do anything with that property, pending this.
Ma, ma, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I have a question. It's a procedural question. So if we're only making a recommendation, then ultimately it's up to the council?
Yes.
And if, and if they go against it, then they would be the ones that would be, if, if in fact there's a taking, it would be by them, not by any our, our action, am I right?
That would, yeah, that would be correct.
Okay.
And it's not, believe me, they, they, um, the courts have addressed this with them on other matters, not in their favor.
As they have.
Not in their favor.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner, I have a question, um, and I guess it would be from Ms. Branch, I would imagine, um, but was this discussed with the county executive as well? In terms of, in terms of changing it to a Category 4 based on, you know, the, the statute that Mr. Goldsmith, uh, Council Goldsmith just read?
No, ma'am, it was not.
Okay.
It was not.
Okay, so let me just tell you this.
And, and the correspondent did not discuss this either with the county executive office.
Let me just say this.
That I am aware of.
Okay, let me say this, we got, we have one minute, and then we're breaking to go into full commission. Now, we can come back to this after the full commission if we're not done, so, um...
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a recommendation if there's nothing further.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, this is Deborah Borden.
Okay.
I think I can help you.
Please.
By just pointing out something really quick.
Okay.
The, the state law has the Planning Board reviewing Water Sewer Plans and Amendments to Water Sewer Plans. For the purpose of, um, determining whether they're consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. That's it. This is really not our bailiwick.
Okay.
In the sense that if, if WSSC makes, uh, a comment or recommendation based on their expertise, and the county council decides to overrule them, that is, that is within the county council's bailiwick, and it's not within ours.
So is it, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan?
That is our only job.
Okay, but I don't know the answer to that.
Your report says it is.
Okay, so, so the report says it is consistent with, with the plan?
Exactly, and that's our only job.
And that, you know, that's where I'm having a problem. Okay.
Okay.
So it is consistent with the plan, that's our job, um, and it does meet the legal criteria, which is the council's job. So what's your motion? Commissioner Duoner, thank you, Ms. Borden, Deputy General Counsel.
I, I hear that we adopt the findings of staff and transmit, um, the recommendations, with the exception of the recommendation, um, for the property that Mr. Haller has brought up, um, that we actually move that to the other sewer, uh, Water and Sewer Category based on section 2.1.4 of the 2018 Water and Sewer Plan. Um, I, I think the backup, the additional backup that was provided, there's two different options that are within almost 1,000 feet, definitely below 1,500 feet, and the criteria of the location within 1,500 feet is what we're being asked to, to evaluate in the 2018 Water and Sewer Plan. So I would switch that, that recommendation, um, but transmit everything else as is.
And that would be, you're recommending to, um, to, that one go to Water and Sewer Category 4? Okay.
Correct. Enough, enough information has been provided today that, that wasn't potentially available before for WSSC, unfortunately.
Okay.
But it didn't, it didn't with, um, with what we're supposed to make the decision on.
Okay, thank you. We gotta go. Okay, is there a second? I'll second it for purposes of discussion. Okay?
That clock's a little fast.
Huh?
That clock's a few minutes.
Okay, so I second it for purposes of discussion. Is there any additional discussion? Um, because I'm with you, Commissioner Duoner. Okay, is there any additional discussion? I'll call for the...
Only that, I, I, all that...
Go ahead.
The, uh, the county executive agrees with the recommendation.
Without the additional information. Don't forget, Ms. Branch, okay, because I...
Right, but I, I guess I would just add for purposes of discussion, uh, especially based on Ms. Borden's comment, it's outside of the purview, legal or not, we're not the legal deciding authority. This is a recommendation. Our only job is to determine whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan... Our only job is to determine whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and so I would be concerned about precedent setting.
So what she said --
I mean, I think Mr. Borden, he has a valid point of view, but take that to the council.
No. Well, what commission -- what Deputy General Counsel said, we have to make sure that our only job is to make sure it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, which she said it is.
That's what I said.
Oh, so you're in agreement with Commissioner Duoner?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So why would we change that? If she -- if our only job of -- Ms. Borden, would you read that again? Say what you indicated before about the -- what the planning board's job is.
I think she left.
Oh, she left? Okay. She said that our job, the planning board's job, is to make a determination of whether the recommend -- whether the water sewer category is -- would be consistent with the plan and that this -- the recommendation of four would be consistent with the plan or the recommendation of five would be consistent with the plan. Mr. Goldsmith?
My understanding was that recommendation of five was consistent.
Oh, okay. That's what I misunderstood. Okay, I misunderstood.
That was my case.
Okay.
That was my understanding as well.
Okay. Mr. Goldsmith, somebody got to get on quickly because we're -- otherwise, we're going to come back after this.
This is Deborah Borden.
Okay.
I'm here.
Well, did you -- was -- did you say that Mr. How -- the recommendation of category four is consistent with the comprehensive plan or the recommendation of category five is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
I didn't say either. I said that the only purpose for the planning board to review these water sewer plans is for the purpose of determining master plan performance. That's it.
Is it in performance with the master plan? Who's going to tell me that?
Ask Ms. Thompson.
Now, Ms. Thompson?
Yes. It -- Madam Chair, it is consistent with the master plan.
What it? What's it?
I mean, the project -- which is consistent with the master plan. I have to pull up this staff report.
Okay.
And I closed it. I apologize.
Okay. So it is -- so category four is consistent with the -- the development proposal for category four is consistent with the master plan. Is that what you're saying?
I am not saying that four is. What I'm saying is that the project itself is consistent.
That's the test. If the project itself is consistent with the master plan, but the project requires a category four.
Hold on. Let me -- just let me -- let me go. I'm getting --
Okay. So we're going to have to go and come back. We're going to have to go because we have to go to full commission. So we're going to -- I try to get this done, but so.
We'll have to come back?
Yes, we're going to have to come back.
I was just getting my --
After we go to full commission. So that's just not working.
Okay.
So if you can withdraw the motion at this time, well, we have a motion and a -- you know what? Or else, are we prepared to vote right now?
Yes.
Or do you need information? Okay. Commissioner Duoner has a motion. I second it. We've had discussion. The project itself, the development project, is consistent with the comprehensive master plan as determined by our staff, not categories, but the development project.
Madam Chair, I'm still trying to figure out, is it four or five that's consistent with the master plan?
No. In order to -- they have a development project which is set forth, and the development project is consistent with the master plan.
Not the category.
Not the category, neither category. The development project is consistent with the master plan. The development project has to have a category four to go forward. Our test, according to counsel, is does the development project -- is the development project consistent with the comprehensive plan? And we've been told by staff and in the staff report that it is.
But has that reflected in the motion?
So it's -- I didn't specifically have it in the motion, but the plan that Mr. Howler has talked about requires it to be category four. So if we were to go to category four, we have to make sure that's consistent with the plan, which that is. There's subdivisions across the street, and it's not in any conflict.
Okay.
So I think that if we approve this, we're not going to be inconsistent with any plan.
Correct.
And with 2018 Water and Sewer Plan, there's ample evidence showing that there's two different alternatives at 1,010 feet and 840 feet.
Can you get us locked in?
That would match the language that we're supposed to be judging it by.
They know you guys are right.
Okay. All right. So it meets the criteria that the planning board is supposed to vote on, and it meets the legal criteria for the connection. It meets the two things. It meets the legal criteria for WSSC connection, and it meets the criteria for the planning board approval, which is, does the development proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of development for that area? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the master plan. It says the 2007 Westphalia-approved sector plan, sectional map amendment recommends low-density residential lots for the subject area.
Right.
This is not low-density. It's townhouses.
No, it isn't. It's not.
It's not?
No, 46 single-family homes.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. I'm calling for the vote. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Duoner?
Vote aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Washington?
No.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No.
Okay. The ayes have it, 3-2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The Prince George's County Planning Board is now in recess. We will convene as the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. Thank you. With our Montgomery County counterparts. Thank you. I'll come.